And if this is our trespasses, we will forgive those who trespass against us. And link us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For that is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner Allwels, please, in flag salute, please.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda is Consider Approval of the Agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item number four.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
James.
For whom? Okay.
Is item number four the citizens' participation? Okay. Is there a reason why you want to remove it?
Day before election, there'll be a lot of people would figure, you know, try to electioneer or try to sway votes one way or the other, and just, you know.
Well, isn't there, isn't it their right to do that?
Not, not in this forum.
We don't have to have citizens' comments ever. Most commissioners, commissions don't. It's not a rule here.
Have we ever done this before?
Yeah, when I served on the commission, back in 2000, we didn't have it then. It's happened since, like, 2008 or something like that. We've never had it before, before then. We didn't have citizens' participation.
Before 2008?
I don't think so, maybe. No. Well, when I came back on the commission, I was off in 2000. I was on 2002, 2004. I came back in 2008, then was on the commission.
Okay, well, we have a motion.
Well, I mean, do we have, we don't really have two, I don't know. Are there a lot of people that want to say something, or?
It doesn't matter how many, it doesn't matter how many people. It's just, it's just day before election, I think it's.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is Consider Approval of the Consent Agenda.
So move.
I'd like discussion on the 10/27 meeting that I missed. And I apologize for that, I had a death in my family.
Is it on this agenda?
The minutes.
Oh, okay, in the minutes, yeah.
All, all I'm asking is if Brian could please provide me with a copy of how you arrived at the amount of $1 million in savings. If you can process that for me and show me, I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Item number three is Commissioners' Comments. Anybody have anything they want to say?
I'd just like to make a point of clarification. Recently, I was advised in a meeting that, that the city attorney was to, to process the information on creating ordinances, and she is to do that at our request, is my understanding. So I just want to point out and clarify that it is our task as city, as the city manager, the mayor, or city commissioners to request those to be placed on the agenda. And to submit them.
What is "our"?
I didn't, I didn't mean to indicate it wasn't your place to submit them to the agenda. I, it does say, "The city attorney shall prepare when requested to do so." In all the years I've done this, I've never had to wait until somebody specifically asked me to do so if an item had been placed on the agenda and an ordinance needed to be prepared. And if there's any commissioner that would rather I not prepare them unless specifically asked.
It was just a statement made that it was her job, so I'm just doing a point of clarification that it's, it's her job to prepare at our request.
Well, that's what it said.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll move to the mayor's proclamation. American Recycles Day. Is there someone here to receive that?
Steve's going to receive.
American Recycles Day, whereas the city of Shawnee recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and adopting conscientious habits that will improve our daily lives and bring about a cleaner, safer, and more sustainable environment. And whereas, although there has been a significant increase in the amount of recycling in the city of Shawnee today, we must also continue to focus on other initiatives such as waste reduction, composting, the reuse of products and materials, and purchasing recycled products. And whereas, by encouraging businesses, state agencies, nonprofit organizations, schools, and individuals to celebrate American Recycles Day 2014, we can further promote recycling as an environmentally efficient and economically smart habit. And whereas, state and community leaders can help encourage recycling by informing citizens about local recycling options, they can also help foster greater awareness of the need to expand collections programs by promoting the benefits of recycling investments for businesses. And whereas, it's important that all Shawnee, Oklahoma, citizens become involved in recycling activities and learn more about the many recycled and recyclable products available to them as consumers. It is also fitting for Shawnee, Oklahoma, to celebrate American Recycles Day 2014, and take action by educating citizens about the recycling options available in our community. Now, therefore, I, West Maynard, Mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim November the 15th, 2014, as America's Recycle Day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a comment, please.
Yes, I'd just like to make a quick comment, that we appreciate that the citizens are recycling as much as they do, and to keep the participation rate up, better's the, the city, and the landfill, and we appreciate everybody's participation in recycling.
So have you heard, have you heard anything from Central Plastic to see how, they said they had a very high percentage of recycling, so I just wonder what that percentage was.
We have a 40% participation rate at this time.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Keep it up.
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic.
You remember that, the commissioners that weren't here then, we expected 20% or so about penetration of recycling into the market, and our citizens have doubled that.
It's good job Shawnee.
Can we get bigger pots?
We can, I think, as of October 1st, if, if you want to go to central disposal and purchase a recycling bin, and you set it off the curb, it will be recycled along with your, yeah, the second bin will be recycled along with the first one. And that's at no, no additional cost.
Yeah, you just, you just have to pay for the bin, which is like eight dollars or something like that, right? One time. It's a good deal.
Thank you.
Well, this one's kind of appropriate, winter weather preparedness day. If you're late, I guess the people over on the east coast, some of them are, wish it may be out there. Prepared, we got prepared, ready for that. It's a little early. Whereas, the climate of Oklahoma is conducive to the development of winter weather participation. And whereas, the citizens of Shawnee are adversely affected by such weather conditions. And where it is, whereas, it is recognized that where appropriate actions are taken in response to such conditions, fewer people are injured or killed. And whereas, it is vital that we further an awareness of the dangers of such weather conditions and the protective measures citizens can take in the event of such conditions. And whereas, Shawnee Emergency Management, the American Red Cross, the Potawatomi County Local Emergency Planning Committee, and state and federal agencies desire to continue working with the citizens of Oklahoma and the news media to disseminate information on winter weather preparedness to the people of the state. Now, therefore, I, West Maynard, Mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November the 12th, as Winter Weather Preparedness Day. Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to make a comment?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a little taste of cold weather over the weekend, so it's fitting that we begin to think about that. We will have information available on our website at www.shawneok.org. Or people can also go to the National Weather Service website at weather.gov, or at ready.gov for information on, on winter weather preparedness. We'll have tip sheets available in our office here at City Hall, and we'll also be running information on Channel 3, so people can get that information and be prepared for the season that's coming up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six is a presentation by Michelle Briggs, President and CEO of the Aveda's Foundation, regarding Community Renewal International and upcoming workshops. Ms. Briggs, please state your name, and talk into that microphone so the TV audience can hear you. Okay?
Hi, Michelle Briggs, President of the Aveda's Foundation, and I brought handouts. I'm going to pass those around. We care cards. We care cards, which will make more sense here in a minute. I wanted to let you know today a little bit about what the Aveda's Foundation is working on, and hoping that you will partner with us on it. The, there's a gentleman by the name of Mac McCarter, who grew up in Shreveport, Louisiana, and went to school, higher education in Texas, saw the light, and kept coming back to Shreveport and visiting, and when he did, he saw a real deterioration in neighborhoods. And he kept questioning himself, why do, you know, why are there so many underserved neighborhoods, and why is there a deterioration? And he actually came back and developed a plan. He decided it was because we're no longer connected, we're no longer have relationships with our neighbor, and we don't know who they are. And if you could reestablish that, you could then reestablish our neighborhoods back to their former glory. So he did just that. He started what is now known as Community Renewal International. It's been in existence for 20 years in Shreveport, and it's kind of a three-pronged approach. The first level is renewal teams, where he actually trains people, and it may sound basic, but to care about each other, and to go door-to-door. A group of volunteers and staff that go door-to-door and just say, "We care, we're here for you," and they keep going back over and over and over again. And this is through all levels, you know, from, from underserved neighborhoods on that. Second level is establishing Haven Houses, and Haven Houses are nothing more than, maybe I'm the house on the block that says, "You can all come to me, and I'll try to help you. I will be the block leader," so to speak. And in the event that, say, I was a single mother, and woke up one morning and couldn't get my car to start, I could go to the Haven House and say, you know, "I need help." And that person could either, the Haven House leader could either take me to work, or maybe connect me with Jimmy down the street who knows how to fix cars. And, and we start helping and building relationships and connecting each other with. The, the third level of connectedness is actually building a friendship house. So a friendship house has a large community room, and is actually a home attached to the community room. And the community coordinator moves into the neighborhood with their family, and then they, they offer after-school programs, help with, with homework, GED programs, just all types of, of assistance for kids and for the neighborhood. As I'm sure that all of you are aware, the Aveda's Foundation is working on a lot of things, like walking and biking trails, which you're aware of, that we're assisting with here in Shawnee, but in Bethel also. Public transportation, we're funding a community health coordinator through the hospital for the next three years. We funded a program for Salvation Army called Bridges Out of Poverty, and that's over the next three years also. We're working on a food resource center, it's a community market, a South Park County collaboration, a Y after-school program. We just started the Aveda's Leadership Institute. But yet, still at our offices, we talked nonstop, how do we really make an impact? How do we make a difference? We're just shooting, you know, one thing after another, after another, but how do we make a big impact and improve our entire county? And then we were introduced to community renewal. We feel like it has the opportunity to change Shawnee like we've never known or experienced it for a long time. We hopped on a plane and spent some time in Shreveport. I was lucky enough to go back just last week. They celebrated their 20th anniversary, and Jimmy Carter was the keynote speaker. I may never wash my hand again. Anyway, it was a great honor and privilege, but this is a proven program that, that is, is all about kindness and caring. And the Aveda's Foundation has pledged its support. We're going to champion this. We're right now in the process of, of developing an assessment, so that we know exactly where we're at today, kind of a baseline assessment of our community. So that's in process. And then we're also in the process of establishing the corporate documents for Community Renewal of Potawatomi County. We would like Shawnee to be the pilot before we take it throughout the whole county. We will be the very first small community that Shreveport's ever worked with, or community, community renewals ever worked with. There are projects in Uganda, Cameroon, Washington DC, Abilene, just to name a few. Anyway, we can't do it alone. We need partners, and we're hoping that you'll partner with us. We're going to start, as it mentions in the agenda, taking bus trips to Shreveport, because seeing is believing. And I think if you, if you see community renewal in process, you'll be a believer. So our first trip is November 16th through the 18th, which I understand clashes with a city commission meeting, but we'll have trips in the future. And we hope that you will become a partner in this project with the Aveda's Foundation.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I'm just going to take the power of chair here and say just a couple of words to you. You know, I sometimes wonder, thank you is not a good, enough for what Aveda's is doing. I thought of the biggest word I could think of, and maybe that's super caliphragilistic ex nihilo. But we are so blessed and so thankful for what you're doing for the community, and the county, and the surrounding areas. And please let us know how we might work more closely together to make this a better place for all, and you're definitely doing it, and thank you.
All right, are there any questions?
Do we have any friendships, friendship houses, like, in this area identified, or?
No, we don't. We, we haven't even identified the neighborhoods yet that we might serve, but we have established kind of by population and by poverty level, that we would probably need five to eight friendship houses spread across the community.
So you're still at the, like, what was it, teaching abadarian?
Organizing, yes, we're definitely in the organization, and we're just trying to get the word out, because it's going to take a lot of people besides us.
There's, there's other organizations, like, in the area, I'm pretty sure it could be like a multiplier for, you know, your foundation, like the tribes, for example. They do this kind of stuff, too.
Right. That's on the agenda.
Right, good.
Definitely.
Yeah, they've been doing it a little while, too.
This is about connecting and relationships, and building, and caring, and kindness.
Networking, and, yeah, raising us all together.
It's how we can all be stronger if we're connected together.
It's great.
Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this to us, and.
I guess one question is, Michelle, what do we need to do to move this on, I mean, what's the commission need to do?
Well, we'd like your support. We, we'd like, on the first trip, we have some of the city folks going, and we appreciate that, but we'd like continued participation in the trips to Shreveport, because I think they're so educational, and a necessity to learning the process. As we get further along in the project, I mean, one thing that I forgot to mention, which is probably the most impactful of everything that, that Community Renewal does, is that they've proven in Shreveport that crime has dropped from 40 to 70%. I mean, that's pretty mind-blowing, so.
Yes, Allendale?
It's gone from 70 to 40?
Yes.
From 70 to 40?
40 to 70%.
Oh, it's dropped, yeah, okay.
In some neighborhoods, you know, 40%, but all the way up to 70%. Allendale was such a scary neighborhood that the police didn't even like to go in. No pizza delivery places or taxis could go in, and you wouldn't believe what it looks like today. And that's why going there is leaving is seeing. They rebuilt the houses, and they built 50 new homes. That neighborhood had never seen anything new until the friendship house was built. Friendship houses are usually built two to a 30-block area, so that they can support one another. Anyway, it's amazing, the statistics. That's why we're being so careful and making sure that we have a baseline to begin with, so that we can actually say we did reduce crime through the community renewal program.
Great.
Brian, this is just an information item tonight, so.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
We could place that on the agenda for next meeting to, to support, for the commission to vote to support.
Resolution for support, whatever we can do.
That would be fine.
Okay, and the next time another trip is scheduled, could you let us know?
We sure will.
Please, thank you. Some of us would like to go. It's a commission meeting. Thank you again. Okay. Item number seven is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to DNX the property located at the north half of the southeast quarter of Section 3, Township 10, North Range 3, east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Applicant Randy Beller and Brian Click. Could I have a staff report on this matter? Could we? I'll need.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. If you're following along on your iPads, it's on page 55, it's the beginning of this item. Just to orientate yourself with the location of the property, it's on the west side of Acme Road, north of MacArthur, and just south, immediately south of the Elks Golf Course and Country Club, so south of 45th Street. And so that, it is, it is in a location relative to, to other, other uses, including the Ashford Place Apartments, which are immediately to the east, as well as a multifamily development that's being completed very shortly, called Belmont Park. And then, of course, to the southwest is the Kickapoo, or A Kickapoo Casino Complex there on that adjacent property. To give you some history and background on the site itself, it is a site that was annexed in June of 1980. The petitioners bought the property in February of 2014, according to county records. In July of this year, city commission approved a preliminary plat that indicated two phases on 110 residential lots. And so I think four of you were here at that time. And then, in September, the applicants followed up with a final plat submittal for Phase 1, which I think was around 50 or 51 lots. And then, at that time, they asked to place that item on hold at the planning commission, and then a petition was submitted for deannexation. The preliminary plat that was approved back in July did approve some deviations over the standard, the base standards of our code. The one in particular that I wanted to point out was that 16 lots were allowed to utilize onsite septic systems versus public sewer because some of the topographic challenges of the site. In addition to just general topography on the property, there's also two large gas lines that traverse the site, and then it is also, a portion of the property is also on the flood plain. So there are some challenges to developing the property. Planning commission recommended approval of that deviation. And so just to be more clear, the deviation is, rather than having a hookup on a city sewer and extend a city sewer line to a portion of the plat, certain 16 lots, that deviation was granted. So I just wanted to, to mention that as well. In review of the petition and review of the matter, staff does recommend that the commission denies this request. We do that for the following reasons. Number one, public roads, utilities, other city services are readily available and immediately adjacent to the property. There's a 12-inch water line, there's sewer line, there's sewer improvements that have been made as developments occurred. And so this can readily be served. And so, in staff's opinion, that a deannexation request may be appropriate in an area where maybe the city got far ahead of itself, annexed property, and there's just no reasonable way to serve it with, with city services. But that just isn't the case on this side. And so when you consider that, the only reason anyone would want to deannex is simply to get around certain city rules and regulations. And so that's, that's an important distinction that I think you need to consider. And those development costs, then, might be lowered, but then what would be the exchange that the public would have for that, for that shift? Number two, this decision, a decision to DNX would set a precedent, but I think would make it difficult for you to deny, to not approve similar requests in the future. So I think it's dangerous in that regard. Number three, there would be a loss of revenue if this request was approved. Revenues would include one-time sales tax for equipment and, and materials that are delivered to the site during home construction, franchise and utilities fees, permit costs, et cetera. Those fees, of course, would, this is a multi-year development, it would take multi-years to build out, but total, those fees would exceed, would, would be in the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And number four, lastly, it's very difficult to annex property. And so conversely, I think that means that we should very seldom DNX property, because I think it's best to think of the city limits as basically fixed. State law continues to be more and more difficult, and more and more stringent for annexation. And so with that in mind, thinking toward, thinking long-term, and how the city grows 20, 30, 40 years from now, we are going to be at a point, not now, but someday, where land is, is limited, undeveloped land is limited. And also wanted to point out that the conference of plan speaks to, to strategic annexation, and, and the importance of strategic annexation, and nowhere does it suggest that we should be deannexing property. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have. I will also note in your packets, we did receive one letter of opposition to the request from the Shawnee Home Builders Association dated October 8, 2014. There may be someone here from the association that can speak to that. I just wanted to mention that correspondence as well. Are there any questions?
Justin, how does this work in our comprehensive plan on that property? Do we have any developmental lines or thoughts in that direction yet?
Yeah, the, the property, when it was annexed, was annexed and then also zoned for single-family residential at that exact same time. residential at that exact same time. And so the applicant, when they purchased the property, it was already zoned appropriately for a single-family residential, which is what they intended to do for the property. And it's included as a residential piece of property in the Conference of Plan map as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll beg you. Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Okay, at this time, I will open our public hearing, and I'll call for anyone that's in favor of this matter to come forward and speak, please. Be sure to state your name and sign in, please, so we'll have a record.
Mayor, Commissioners? My name is Alan Grubb. I'm the attorney for Randy Beller.
Alan, turn that microphone up, too, so you can talk to him for our TV audience. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, my name, Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Alan Grubb. I'm the attorney for Randy Beller and Brian Click. We filed this deannex detachment petition for the purposes of making this project feasible. I want to start with correcting some misstatements from the previous speaker. He claimed there were two gas lines that made the project particularly difficult. There's five gas lines. One is a very old line that is approximately three inches deep that's of a perpetual problem. That line will have to be strategically dealt with and causes problems for sewage. The statute we filed under eleven, twenty-one, one-ten allows my client to request the property to be deannexed when his need for deannexation outweighs the legitimate legislative purpose of this committee. This property is unique to Shawnee in that it borders a golf course outside of town. And the inherent plan is to incorporate it with the golf course, with cart paths and things like that, to make it part of the Elks. The concern that the speaker, the gentleman before me raised about making this a precedent for future projects, I doubt we have too many golf courses outside of town where we're trying to develop the only land around it and add golf cart courses or golf cart paths and things like that. We filed our petition. Your court clerk, or city clerk, determined that our petition was sufficient. That means three-quarters of the registered owners of the land and three-quarters of the voters of the land signed and approved of it. Your own city planning commission says in their report on page two, says the proposed development and detachment probably has minimal impact to the city. You just heard him say there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact, and then in his report, he turns around and says, in paragraph four on page two, the proposed development has, probably has minimal impact to the city. The impact to my client is far greater. The proposed development, because of the nature of the land, the problems that have developed with the gas lines, the sewage issues, impact him far greater than they impact the city losing this eighty acres on the edge of town on a golf course bordered on two sides by county property. He said that city utilities were right next to the property. My understanding is that's not completely true. We would have to go all the way to the corner, almost to the corner of forty, Acme and MacArthur, which, to put larger lines in... But what is true is Rural Water District Three does have lines to the property. Rural Water District Three has the infrastructure at the property, and they are on, up to the property. That is the case, and we're bordered on, again, two sides by county. There is no legitimate interest in keeping the area in the city. He referred to some sales tax revenue, one-time sales tax revenue. I believe what he's referring to is the purchase cost of materials. As probably any builder can attest, those materials can be purchased at any store and hauled to site in a county region and not be taxed. I'm sure builders use that method all the time, where they purchase their materials in stores located in county areas without paying city sales tax and haul those materials to the site. There are no downsides to the city here. They're trying to work together with the Elks to make both a better place to be, a better place to play, and a better place to live. Nothing further.
By the way, anybody have any questions for you? Okay.
Yeah, I have one. You're talking about three-quarters of the people. How many people's there?
Two.
Thank you.
So, did I, I do have a question. You said there was one gas line that was five inches deep.
Three inches.
Three inches deep. So that's, I would think that that's totally unacceptable.
Corporation commission property.
Totally. I would be calling a corporation commission for that replaced because that's a safety concern. That's one of the reasons, I'm really concerned about the safety and everything, and it's one reason, only one reason, that I think it needs to be stayed in the city for public safety.
I got more questions.
Mr. Grubb, what happens if you're not deannexed? What's the plan? Are you still going to be building the houses, right? You're still going to...
Well, if we're not deannexed today, I imagine a lawsuit would be filed under eleven, twenty-one, one-oh-six in the morning. Try to get everybody served tomorrow. Set a hearing within fifteen days or so, that would be my plan.
Okay, well...
And no, I don't know what happens. The costs could be too, too far out there for it to be a profitable venture because of the flood zone issue, because of the gas line issue. What we're having to do is we're having to build it up, so if you're looking at Acme, if you're coming from Acme Road, it's going to look like a pyramid almost to cover that three...
The pipes and...
Pod.
Right. Did he not know that when he bought the place? He just didn't go out there and look at it, call Oki before he started digging, or?
Well, when you buy a piece of property, they don't tell you there's gas lines only buried three inches deep. But, you know, they used to do gas lines by picks and shovels, not by machines, back at the time that was laid.
I mean, I'm just trying to say, is it, is it really the problem, is the problem really with the city, or is it really with the person who bought the land, or just that the land is like, you know, not ready to? What I'm trying to say is, should he be, will deannexing really get the houses built faster? Will it really improve everything?
Deannexing will take away enough regulation to make it profitable for him to build the houses faster because of the decreasing costs, not from taxation, but because of time constraints for waiting on planning commissions. You know, those times constraints cost money, the permit costs.
We'd already heard that the Planning Commission is actually, well, at least the city has been loose and helped, been more than helpful with that to, with time constraints.
And there needs to be more. They reached the point of impasse. What you didn't hear from the city was, they had talked, they were almost to the point of agreement, and it fell apart. There needed to be more variations, and they weren't there.
Well, I mean, okay, I understand, but there are, you know, there are rules, you know, and you know that when you go into it, so...
Well, but when you go out and buy a piece of property, there's rules that the gas lines are forty-eight inches deep, or however deep they're supposed to be now.
Sure.
And I doubt, I bought property and broke it up myself, I didn't go out and measure how deep the gas lines running through the property were, the oil lines, things like that.
Right.
Yeah, caveat important, buyer beware, but again, we're talking about a twenty-five-million-dollar housing development that may or may not happen based on what this city commission does, which makes it more profitable for the builder to be able to actually do this and get those families, or, we're talking minimum square footage, I think twenty-six hundred square foot per house. So get the houses built, start paying, it's going to be roughly two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year in property taxes, it's going to increase for the schoolchildren.
Right.
So every delay to keep this from being profitable to the builder hurts the county, the citizens of Shawnee. Even though we're outside, we, our request is to be outside the city limits, we're still going to be in the Shawnee school zone.
Yeah, and those people will be buying from our places, a business.
Yeah.
Right, they'll be spending their money here, so, understood.
And, you know, I lived in the city, well, the area most of my life, Shawnee, for quite a while, I had businesses here. The, and I've got the notices that the lake levels go low quite often. I've been on Rural Water District Three at my current home for about two years, and I've never got a letter from Rural Water District Three that the lake levels are low and I can't irrigate.
Well, I can tell you that everybody on the commission loves Shawnee water, so, we want you to, so...
Well, and I understand, but the problem is, you know, whenever, whenever you add those-sized houses irrigating those-sized yards, which that would be this type of gated community where there's going to be irrigation, that's going to be a large substantial drain on the water. And the drain on the water, I'm not sure that the current lakes can handle. I mean, people are telling me every day how they can walk across the lake. I haven't been out there to try it, but that concerns me when I'm talking about putting in a housing development that's going to require Shawnee to have the water capacity to do it.
All right, sir, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Would there anyone like to speak and oppose this matter? Okay, not hearing from any more people, I will close our public hearing. We have heard the staff's recommendation. Does the commission have any discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion, or if there's not a motion, just let me know.
I'll make a motion to deny the deannexation. Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny that annexation.
Is, just for a little discussion, I always wondered, is it because we don't want to be in the business of...
Well, first of all, you're setting, and I agree with the staff report that you're setting a precedent by DNXing the property. We've, I've been on the commission for twelve years, and within that time, we've only DNXed one small piece of property, and that was because the county and the city maps didn't agree where the, where the property was.
Lines were, okay.
But otherwise, we've not, and Justin's exactly right, it's very difficult, almost impossible, to annex additional property, so you can't afford to give up any properties that you have. I, I...
But it'd be, you heard him talk about like, like these big old homes getting in over there, and all those folks are going to be in Shawnee.
Well, there's a housing addition that is north of the Elks now.
Yeah, yeah.
And, of course, he's talking about the taxes, the taxes, according to, and I make sure on our projects that it's point of delivery, which is Shawnee, and I make sure the taxes come to Shawnee. So it's, the taxes are to be paid on the point of delivery, not where the, he purchased the merchandise.
Well, I'm thinking like long-term, like on revenue.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking long-term, too.
Right.
Because I don't want to get into the, get into the habit, I don't want to set a precedent for future commissions to DNX property. After the property's been platted, they're working out their, all down to the day, but last week, they're working out there every day. And I agree with Commissioner Hall that if I had a pipeline that wasn't very according to specification, the people I'd be talking to was corporation commission.
Right.
I wouldn't be up here talking to the city commission, going, "We don't have any authority on that." But I'd talk to the corporation. I think the planning commission, the planning commission will work with the, with the people to work out all the details they can to save as much money as they can to stay within the codes.
So just perhaps give them, or they can continue to be flexible so that we can get these houses developed.
Under Mr., under Justin's leadership, they've done an excellent job throughout the last several years now. I couldn't say that a few years ago, but I say that today, that he'll do anything he can to make sure this project goes. And the planning commission will do.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any discussion? If not, then would you read the title, please, ma'am?
You haven't moved to pass an ordinance.
No, so...
We have a motion and a...
To deny.
But to deny.
Vote to deny.
Oh, to deny, okay.
To deny the...
So, so a yes vote denies.
That's correct, yes vote denies.
Okay, so we need to vote?
Got to get that clear.
So you don't have to read it, okay? Okay, then I guess we vote. Yes vote denies that request. The guesses, Karen?
Stand below.
Okay. So request denied. Item number eight is discussion and consideration of possible action to set deadline for submission for items for agenda.
I ask that this item be placed on the agenda because we're winding up with staff overtime on a Friday afternoon and so forth, and I, having operated with the Board of Education for about thirty years, we've always had a time requirement of when the last item can be on the agenda. If that's, if an emergency comes up, the city manager has the, has the authority by law to add it under new business, so if any kind of emergency comes up after the agenda is published, then that's available to them. So this will give staff an opportunity to develop the proper documentation for the agendas and get them out maybe on Thursday afternoon instead of late Friday afternoon or Saturday.
So, James, did you have a day of the week and time that you think would be the...
Well, I talked to Phyllis, the last possible day, she said would be Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon?
Yeah.
What's wrong with Thursday, close the business?
Well, that's...
We'd like to get them out on Thursday.
They like to get the agendas out on Thursday.
We don't usually, we usually get it on Friday. I know, that's lately, but that's not what we've normally done.
I think you should know by Thursday at noon, I can't imagine it'll come up, you know, but again...
Well, unless somebody has an agenda item they want to put on there and they're waiting for information or something, waiting for...
Well, they can contact the, they can get that on there, they can contact...
You can always take it off, you know, if you didn't get the information, you can wait later.
You can remove it even after the agenda's published.
Have you had problems when you get things like two in the afternoon on Thursday of getting it on the agenda?
Well, you got things at five o'clock on Friday.
I know. That's what I'm saying, by close the business on Friday.
Well, it depends on how lengthy the item is, how many attachments it has. We always like to have a little leeway in the event that we have computer problems, server issues, now that we're doing electronic everything, we're just, you know, we allow a little bit of leeway for us, and that's why we like to have Fridays available as well, not take it down to the wire on Friday afternoon.
Well, I wish it was on Monday, so I'd have more time to study the agenda and call and ask questions about it, but I know that's not realistic.
I think, I would think Thursday at noon, you know, for a big, ninety-nine percent, it would be fine, right? There may be some time that you would want to call in something late, and you can talk to Brian about it being an emergency or something like that, and he could put it on there afterwards, you know...
Under new business.
Under new business.
There's certain conditions under law that you can put on there, under new business.
We have not heard about it, and it's an informal piece of, an agenda item that needs to be moved on. If we publish the agenda and it wasn't foreseen at the time that we published the agenda, we can add it under, under new business. We try not to do that because we don't want commissioners to be making a decision on the fly, our citizens don't get a chance to read our agendas and go over them. I think more than often, guilty as charged, I'm the guy that's got an agenda item on there that sets it on Wednesday at four o'clock, we meet for, three o'clock, we meet for agenda setting, and then the prep work goes on to try and get all of the documentation together that we want to supply with it. That's usually what happens, the later that we get it, the more difficult it is for us to get things to you. And we all, those that are involved in the agenda setting process, we know that those days are fairly reserved for those last-minute things. We try not to put other meetings on our schedules, and we try to be here for that. And the point, I'll just stop with this, you know, as much time as you can give us would be, any time you can give us would be better.
Are you saying that we're supposed to get the agenda on Thursday afternoon?
No, that's when we have agenda setting.
Wednesday afternoon.
Wednesday, Wednesday at noon, right?
Thursday afternoon, I know, but I was thinking you said that you tried to get the agenda out on Thursdays.
Yes.
That's why you want noon Thursday as a deadline.
She wants to publish it Thursday.
We'd like to publish it before five o'clock. We'd like to publish it before five o'clock on Thursday.
So is there a required 48-hour notice, Phyllis, that has to, for agenda items to be placed on there? I'm, I'm the culprit, I'm sure, here of the Friday late items.
We all have.
I've been guilty too, and I, I'd never thought about the, the overtime, like, I don't get overtime pay where I work, so, I work on Saturdays and Sundays.
We don't either.
I know, I've had to do that to you on a couple of occasions and had to ask for expedited requests, so I regret that, but at the time, it was necessary. So I'd be willing to do Thursday, close a business if we could do that.
What, what's the problem with noon on Thursday? It's just, it's just another four, five hours, and if it helps, helps the staff, I mean...
Having done this for 30 years, as school servant, mine was on the Friday before the next meeting on Monday, and I mean, that was a strict rule, because I had, I, we prepared all of our agendas like we used to get them here, 200 pages of printed work.
Well, I also think it's a courtesy to the other commissioners who may want to study up on what, that agenda item, right? I may want to go drive and look at a piece of property or whatever the agenda item is, and it gives me more time to where I can do it on a Friday, you know, um, you know, or Thursday afternoon if we get it by, you know, but, but Friday, right now, we're getting stuff, you know, right at the last minute.
Well, it's just not right now, ever since I've been on commission. Sometimes we do it, and what I worry about is laying something on them, asking them to do it, and, and the information, it doesn't give them full time to really research it and do all that. And secondly, I've served on many corporate boards, and I tell you, we always had our agenda two weeks before. And, and we're not saving lives here. I mean, it's not like emergency surgery. I mean...
Well, I think that being equal, we'll have them in on Thursday at noon, right?
Right.
Like, unless this guy's falling or whatever.
Unless there's some crisis, just go to the city manager, okay? Okay, chair later.
Let me clarify one thing before going farther, though. The 48-hour rule, it's, is different. This is a 24-hour rule, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, which means the 24 hours is Friday at 6:30 to when you start 6:30, but that's a posting rule, that's the latest you can post it.
Open meetings.
And so, and the, the new business has to be something that wasn't known or could not reasonably have been foreseen at the time of the posting. So it's, it's very unusual to end up with something on new business that pretty much has happened over the weekend, and sometimes it does, but more often, whatever that is, needs a special meeting. So technically, if you can find somebody to change the agenda after five or six thirty, we could repost it, but it's, it's a posting issue on that score, and then it's the gathering of the materials that's really the bigger problem.
So if it's something that comes up on Thursday afternoon, you couldn't carry it on new business?
No.
Because it wasn't within that timeframe, okay, after posting?
But Brian could still put it on the agenda if he had the, you know, authority to put it on the agenda on a Friday and repost.
Before posting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd maybe set the deadline for noon on Thursday before the commission meets.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? I know we've had discussion, I guess, do we need to amend that to say the city manager, or is that fine?
City manager actually prepares, has control over it.
Okay, that's all right.
You have control, you can put something on, but he basically has the control, so you don't need to do anything else.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, because I think, in case something comes up, okay?
City manager has the, could you clarify on that?
The city manager is charged with putting, pulling together the agenda, pulling the items together, physically pulling them together, even though any one commissioner can put something on the agenda. You confirmed that this year, you didn't want to change. Any one commissioner can put something on the agenda, but he's the one that collects all that information, gets it to her, gets it on a piece of paper, and gets it posted.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do you have some more discussion?
No, I just, I'm trying to make sure I understand it. Basically, unless, unless it's like we said, we, like at Thursday afternoon, you didn't get that information she wanted to, and then she just, like Linda would call Brian and say, "Hey, put this on there on Friday," and then, okay.
And so Brian would determine if it was an emergency.
It still would just...
Can get the information together.
If everything, yeah.
So does this mean we need to actually change the MUNICode because it doesn't indicate that in section two hyphen 32?
You might, I, I'll need to look that up. Are you talking about the agenda setting? We amended, we amended that this last year, and it's in a separate, um, well, what we changed it to say is that the city manager places it on to be set, uh, that gives it to the clerk, the, but it says an item is timely requested, and what you're talking about here is setting what the timely request is.
So we don't need to revise the code then?
Okay.
Just defining our...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I guess then, and I think we're ready to Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may stop just for a second so that we get some clarification here. November, because of the holiday schedule, the commission meets on the first of December, so we would need information from, I mean, generally, we're going to have everything gathered up on the Thursday before, and we'll be placing your agenda and putting it together. Because of the holidays, we need some lead time.
Two seconds.
Two.
Right.
Okay. Okay, item number nine is discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution instructing the city clerk to report to appropriate authorities for the failure of any party to make reports of campaign spending as required by law. I'm calling on you, I guess, the attorney.
Well, they...
Mr. Mayor.
And reviewing the law with the city manager, the requirements on the, on the fundraising or, no, I don't guess you'd call it fundraising, but contributions or campaign contributions and the reports, we don't have any kind of a deadline. I mean, we can go on for a year or two and not, not have a deadline, so we need to have a deadline, and we don't have any authority whatsoever to enforce the, to enforce reports. Coming in January, the, the...
I think it's a great idea putting some structure into this, Deputy Mayor. I'd suggest that we, we might task Brian and the city attorney and Phyllis to set up a policy and procedure and see if we can actually incorporate that into the MUNICode at some level.
I've asked the city, I mean, asked the attorney, Mayor Antedog, to develop a resolution to this effect, and which he's done.
This says make reports of campaign spending as required by law. Is this the new law, or is it always been in the...
Well, no, there's, there's always been a law about report, reporting, filing reports, and you file them in different places depending on what the race is. The, uh, there are reports that are to be filed with the city clerk, but the city doesn't have any enforcement and has never, there's never been any instruction that the city do anything other than just, well, I mean, Phyllis is in charge with making a report to anybody. As I understood, what, what Commissioner Herod was asking for was just that the city clerk be instructed that if stuff didn't come in, doesn't mean making a complaint, but just file notice with the appropriate authorities, these didn't come in. Right now, that would be the district attorney. After the first of January, it'll be the Ethics Commission because they are going to take over municipal enforcement. They've done a whole restructure of the code.
That seems pretty simple and straightforward, then. If you have, if by the time, there's, there's, the law says how much time you have to turn it in, so if you go past that, one week past of whatever, you would, she would just turn it over to the Ethics Commission.
So there is a law now that says January 1st?
January 1st, it goes to the Ethics Commission. This, this proposal, she would look, and if stuff wasn't in, she'd write a letter, says your report's late.
Oh, good people.
Your report's late, and if they don't come in, it's 10 days, then she just sends a letter to the district attorney or later the Ethics Commission and says, "These reports came in and these didn't," and then if they want to do something about it, they can do something about it. If they don't want to do anything about it, they don't.
What's the timeframe? You know, I'm shocked as we go through this, because I know there's, some of us ran in the last, in election, and I know this much, we were down here the day before it was supposed to be filed and turned in and all that stuff, and everybody that gave money to our campaign and...
Well, but then some of you never made back for your final report. I mean, it's not unusual for stuff to just kind of slip through the cracks, especially in municipal elections where the candidate paid for all of himself or something. I'll let you run through the various...
Am I guilty of that?
You may be, I'm not sure.
I, I just know it's very confusing the way it is right now. I submitted both to the Ethics Commission and to you, Phyllis. I don't know how many times I came in and visited with you on this. So to me, it would be more streamlined not to do a resolution, but to do a policy so that there's some structure to this process. I mean, to me, we're just making it penalty-based instead of trying to resolve the issue.
I don't know whether we adopt the resolution.
All second. A motion and a second. I'm not sure I know the difference between the policy and the...
Does the resolution, does it like basically describe the policy? Is that...
A resolution is a memorialization of an action. It, you could do a resolution on virtually any action that you take. We could have done a resolution on that previous item about the deadline for the agenda, but it's just a record that's separate from going and looking in the minutes to see what happened. There's a resolution that says what you did as opposed to just minutes. Now, there are the resolutions when you're doing, issuing debt and stuff that are a little bit different, but generally speaking, it's just...
My concern on this is that we're now tasking Phyllis to do enforcement on this, and that's not previously...
It's not enforcement, I don't think it's, it's reporting.
But she just writes a letter.
Well, if you're sending it to authorities, then you're looking towards enforcement.
It's reporting, it's just reporting, here's the situation.
Well, then, why don't we do a structure? Why aren't we wanting a resolution to memorialize?
I guess I don't know what would be in the structure other than what we just said, that if, if the deadline is passed, Phyllis would send the party a letter saying you didn't turn your stuff, give you 10 days. If that doesn't come in, then just turn it over to the Ethics Commissioner or District Attorney, whoever it is. That's pretty structured right there, I would think.
It's not making a complaint. You're not asking the city clerk to make a complaint.
Just report.
It certainly sounds like it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
So, vote to pass the resolution.
Yes, vote. Oh, wait, you want to read it first?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
This is a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, instructing the city clerk of Shawnee with regard to obtaining campaign finance and reports and authorizing the filing of notice of failure to file with the proper authorities.
Okay, now we can vote.
Pretty, pretty genuine.
Yes.
It's good.
Motion carries. Okay. Item number 10 is presentation by Finance Director Cinematelli on financial update.
It's like three years...
As you see on the dais, there is a budget brochure. I apologize for it being late. Take a look at it. I've had a really hard time with Publisher, so if you find any typos, please let me know. And my goal is like Wednesday afternoon, if I haven't heard anything back, I'll go ahead and make copies. They will be double-sized, so you'll only have one sheet. This is the financial review, this is as of September 30th. I'm basically going to just go over to the general fund. I'm not going to talk about every line item, but these are some of the top revenues that we have, sales tax, use tax, alcohol beverage tax, cigarette tax, and our franchise fees. So far this year, we have collected $3,708,000. Now, comparing it to last year, we are up a little bit. We only collect 3.6 million last year at the same time. Some of the franchise fees, we have to remember, they run in arrears, so through September 30th, I haven't gotten September fees until October. Here's the comparison. Sales tax, we're only up 1.67%, use tax is up 5%, and some of the other revenues are down. One that surprises me is the cable franchise. I don't know if less people are using cable, or I need to look into that, but that is the comparison.
So, so the, is it, it's down significantly is what you're saying, the cable?
19%.
Yeah, 19%.
Do we have a cable commission or anything that reviews these kind of cable agreements?
We do have, there is a franchise fee agreement.
Years ago, we had a cable and television commission, and they helped develop the franchise agreement with, at the time was, is even before Allegiance Communications. I've been having conversations with the mayor to, to put something together with some folks that have some experience. In 2015, we will have to renegotiate our franchise agreement with Five Communications, so with the, with the level of service that we receive from them, it's time that we have some serious discussions with them about that level of service. I know Wes has been trying to get that put together, but I don't know that there's been a lot of people that have been willing to serve.
Do we, what's our current agreement with Five?
I can get you that. It's, it's a franchise agreement where they pay us 4% of, of proceeds from the, from the sale of cable television.
And we just sent an email, didn't we, today?
We did, I think it was 3%. I'm not wrong.
3%? I think power's 4%. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Netflix, man.
But I guess another question is, what's the term we're looking at for them right now in their agreement?
Well, currently, it's seven years, and as I understand it, that's negotiated at the point at which we do our franchise agreement.
Was that Allegiance when they did that?
I believe so. I wasn't here when it was negotiated.
They've got a 20-year rental agreement too, right?
I guess my concern...
They did for their building on, on airport, yes, sir.
And it's a good point that you brought up, Cynthia. My concern on that, I guess, Brian, is that the agreement was previously with Allegiance, and now we've got Five who did a whole franchise change and a whole dynamic change. Would our agreement still be standing?
Yes. There are very, very few things that we as a city can change because the FCC regulates what we can negotiate with them for, but there are some parameters, and we just, more than anything, the, our, our franchise agreement means they're obviously our right of ways, but we want to ensure that there's a level of service that they're providing our citizens. I can tell you with the complaints that come to my office, our, our, our level of service has been very, very, very poor.
Going down all the time.
But in fairness to the new company, a couple, I've talked to a couple of them, and they've been shocked what they purchased.
Yeah, we need to give them some time.
Yeah.
I mean, they had people stealing cable, I guess.
Most definitely.
I can't imagine it.
Something good, though, is I, I went from Allegiance to Vibe when they came in, and they lowered my bills by half. Maybe that's why.
But in 12 and 24 months, they'll probably go back up.
Yeah, give me a year.
How long you been there?
For years.
Okay, let's move on through this and see what else.
But the franchise fees, I lost it.
Oh, you got me.
As you can see, back in 2013, 2014, it ran about $8,300. It was pretty stable, stable in the years before, but that's one of them that have gone down. I went the wrong way, sorry.
What is nuisance tax?
Nuisance tax is...
All taxes are nuisance.
Stuff that's filed, lean in, that comes in.
It's what?
It's stuff that's filed, and they pay the county, and we get the money.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
It, that varies, there's really not, that's not a stable revenue source.
It's down 130%.
Okay, I did the top sales categories. For last year compared to this year, retail sales, or retail trades are down. I don't want to go every line item, but some of them that have increased quite a bit is one of our, is called the unclassified. I actually called it Oklahoma Tax Commission. That's gone up 78%. With the changeover of the new system, they have gotten people to be able to go on electronically to file their taxes, and what happens is if they leave out one blank area, it goes in the unclassified. And, because I was like, I asked Dave, I said, "It's increased quite a bit," and he said, "They're trying to work out some of the glitches. The biggest goal is to get the cities their money than versus breaking it," you know.
Phyllis, that's...
And these are small, I'm sorry, but this is the three months, as you can see.
What is professional sales tax? I know it's, it's probably obvious, but what is professional sales tax?
That is some services that are charged sales tax. It's very little, that, the two thousand thirteen, we had got nine thousand, that's a high. It's usually very low. I would say it's up there with the unclassified when they're not sure, because most services are not taxable. These are the July, August, September, and I want to bring up that these top, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, top ten actually make up ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the sales tax that's collected. And you have.
What was that again?
It said these top ten codes, we have like twenty of them, twenty-five of them. There used to be a lot more when they used the SIC codes, make up ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our sales tax collections. And revenues at nine thirty are at twenty-two, about twenty-three percent of budget, but we budget straight line. I mean, obviously, things fluctuate in the, in the summer, the electric's real high, gas is real low and vice versa. Expenses for the general fund are at twenty-five percent and basically we're on both targets for revenue and expenses because a lot of the revenues run in arrears. So we have not gotten September revenues yet for the year. And that's just, try to be brief on the general fund and if anybody has any questions.
Thank you for this update. It's kind of nice to have or kind of know where we are. Okay, item number eleven is consider bids, proposals, dispatch center, city of Shawnee,
I saw that.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. In regards to the dispatch remodel project, we'd received two bids. I was kind of disappointed we had five contractors and a subcontractor at the pre-bid meeting, but only received the two bids. Even though there is a, there's a large difference between the bids, I did go back over the specifications, talked with the architect, looked it over to make sure that we hadn't missed something, left something out of the plans in regards to this. Contacted Sage Mill Construction to make sure that they were comfortable with their bid, spoke to several other people and at this point, my recommendation is that we accept Sage Mill Construction.
Have their bonds and so forth.
They have their, their bonds in, in order.
That's a huge difference. You talked to people, it's used them before and had good results.
And they're currently doing, I was, I was kind of afraid that maybe they hadn't done large projects and they're currently doing a one point six million dollar project, so.
It's just a huge difference.
It is, it is.
Well.
They're local too.
Your recommendation is to go with the low bid, did I hear what you said?
Yes, sir. Their, their bid documents appear to be in order.
Okay.
Tell them.
Did you get that, Phyllis?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay, let's vote. Motion carries.
How much, excuse me, how much money was that, was cheaper than what all it's budgeted, wasn't it?
Um, yes, I was pleasantly surprised with this, so.
Wait until they get the job done.
The nice thing is, is we are using the E nine-one-one landline fees that we tend to put in a reserve or contingency and that's what's nice is, is we're able to use these funds and not, not have to head up the citizen for an extra tax or a bond or anything on that space or so.
And that money is restricted to what you use it and this does follow, follow in the lines.
Well, that's a huge difference, but if they're bonded, there's no, should be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number B is coed roofing project and city hall roofing project, I guess, huh?
This is for the award of the coed roofing project that will, that also has an ad alternate to it, to do part of the city hall roof also. As you can see, we, we did solicit bids from, from several individuals, from several qualified companies. We received four. We did call references on this and did check those out. Everything turned out good. They, they have a bunch of good references on this. They have also been in contact with us since and several times before. They, they did do a thorough check on the roofs, they've done core samples when they come down before they bid it, so they knew what they were bidding. And also put a little thing in here to, to just kind of let you all know what we're looking at in the future with some of the other roofs. The estimated cost that we added up for the rest of roofs that we need to replace is between eight hundred and a million dollars. So you're going to see a lot more of these in the future and, and what I would like to do with some of this, and we'll get into this when we start bidding these out, is just try to do a qualities package that we can do several roofs and just keep throwing some money at it.
So what type of roof is this? A built up roof, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, no, this is a fully adhered.
What's the?
The bids come in at a total for both projects at forty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-four dollars, which is nineteen thousand, five hundred for the coed roof and twenty-two thousand, nine seventy-nine for the city hall roof.
So is it going to have some kind of warranty with it?
Yes, yes. We specified in there a minimum of fifteen year manufacturer's warranty and two year labor warranty.
Well, think about that manufacturer warranty, they'll come around and inspect the roof and make sure it's applied correctly before they warrant it.
Uh, this project was also budgeted in the capital outlay budget at sixty thousand dollars, so we are well below what we budgeted, at least for the one roof, and we're getting two out of it. So our staff's recommendation is to award the project to Robbins Roofing out of Mustang, Oklahoma, in the amount of forty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-four dollars.
That gets us two roofs up.
Gets us two roofs then.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Daxter, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, you already have a second. I'll let Mr. Shaw be second, okay? We have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion carries. New business.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I will adjourn commission meeting and to the Shawnee, I mean, to the Shawnee Airport Authority and I'll call it to order. We do have a forum, consider approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make.
A motion by Vice Mayor Hare, do we have a second?
Second.
Did you say second?
Yes.
Mr. Daxter, okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and convene to the municipal authority and I will call it to order and I'll declare we do have a forum. I'll consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Daxter. Let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority and adjourn our meeting, thanks to each and everyone.